Yeah, it's called the city council in West Liberty, Iowa to order on. This date at seven thirty P M and we have a full. Contingence of the. We're joined by council member Martinez, council member Schultz. Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin, Councilmember Dominguez and Councilmember Frazek. So, uh, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Next up is item number three, approval of the consent. Agenda and we have, um, I believe two reports there. Um, we've received a report from the city manager. Uh, and also there are the city council member, uh, meeting member. Meeting Bennett from, uh, October first. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Uh, the consent agenda is approved. Item number four on the agenda is, uh, reports and first is, uh. From the city engineer, so we'll, uh, wait on that. Uh, and then in your packet is information from the water treatment plant from water, um. From, uh, the fire and emergency, uh, medical services as well as the library report. Um, are there any questions or concerns regarding any of those reports? I figured out what G P M means gallons per minute as we were talking or the information about well number. Two in the report.
So is it, I guess we'll have to wait for Leo, but is that it's not working properly or? We just aren't finished with it yet.
I have not heard anything. I know that Leo was going to be on. I don't know if she is or not, but I have not heard anything on that project itself.
Okay.
Lee, are you on and is there any information that you can provide regarding well number two?
So, um, the well number two, the pump. Is not pumping at the capacity that it was, um, originally. Believe that it would be able to produce, uh, water and, um. I just know I would wait for Leo to explain that in more detail, but, um, they are currently trying to work on. Um, getting that pump to produce what they had originally, um. Stated that it could, could handle.
Thank you.
Okay, lots of other good information in those reports about repairs that are being made and. Uh, things that come up on the agenda. So any further discussion and questions from council members about? Any of the information in your packet?
I feel like we're cursed with well number two. Like just when we thought it was gonna be done and over with. Since I swore my oath, we would talk about well number two.
It does seem to be a recurring theme, uh, and there are recommendations for D N R that we have some, you know, I said about. Uh, that it would be good for folks to go through the building, uh, and see the. Uh, improvements that are needed there, but one of the concerns is the office area around well number two. D N R would like to see that gone. Uh, we don't have, uh, people in that area and, uh, equipped in that area as well. All right, um, next up are committee reports. I don't remember any committees meeting. Next is item number five, vendor voucher claims and, um. You all may have saw the communication between, uh, the mayor pro Tim and. Uh, the city clerk about, uh, these, uh, reports. So. Um, item five A is the vendor voucher claim list number one and the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred. Sixty-four dollars and eighty cents. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
I did have a question. About, and maybe you just answered it, but there's a chart, seven thousand dollar charge to D N R. And wasn't sure what that was on the prepaid. I, so yes.
Number ninety-eight.
Thank you, God.
That's our recycling. That's a swap grant that we pay back on.
Yeah, I just didn't know what swap grant was. I was like, why are we paying it if it's a grant? Yes, that makes sense. That's that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there other questions regarding the vendor list number one, item five A on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, approving this vendor list signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, uh, the gen- the vendor list is approved. Item five B, library free plate, eight planes and an amount of six thousand. Two hundred and eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So now we will go back since we finished that for, um, city engineer and your report. We tried to make that.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, uh, as short as possible. Couple of, um, couple of things going on. First of all, um, with the, um, wastewater treatment plan, we met with the D N R. And you had staff online, we had staff online, talking about the loan process, talking about West Liberty Foods. What's gonna happen? So I think as you guys know, we've kind of cut the project into two parts. One is called a baseline, which are kind of the. Most important things and then future. The future's kind of off the table and then the baseline, when West Liberty ran into it, West Liberty Foods ran into some financial issues. We even tried to put that in phase one and phase two. Our problem was the loan probably needs to be one long for phase one and phase two or. Completely separate. So that's something we just have to work through. Uh, there is some potential for forgivable loan, forgivable, um, part of the loan. So that's something that we brought up at the meeting and they basically said until. You actually do the loan document, which you can't do the loan document until the plans and specs are done. They won't know the answer of, of how much. But that is good news because almost everybody's getting something depending on. Kind of your, um, um. Low to moderate income ratio. It's, it's not a zero, but it's, it's, it's a phased in type of thing that seems to be moving, a moving term. So that's that one. Well, number two, we've still got some. Problems with the, uh, integration of well number two and. The people from Marne are coming like in mid-November and we'll be having some ideas for them, but we didn't want to make. Changes to their equipment without them here and that was. Probably a, a really. Austin Trump thought that was a good idea and I, I did too. So that will be, will be done. Other than that, everything's worked out there. Um, you've probably noticed on Columbus Street, uh, moving forward with the long awaited sidewalk along Columbus Street. We do have one issue with, um, the part wash had one of their bays with heated concrete, so we've. Gotta be coming back to you with a, a, a change order for some of that, but other than that, everything else seems to be going as well as, um. We could have hoped for through that thing. I think all Americans knew it out and doing a really good job. And, and the way the heated concrete will work is part of it will be an upcharge. And then will be a reduction for the, because we had regular concrete, so there'll be a subtraction and then an upcharge. Could be in the neighborhood of about ten thousand dollars. And then that's, that part of that project should be done.
Is that, oh, I'm sorry. Question about the heated concrete. Is that the responsibility of his business or is that going to be?
Responsibility of the project because we're putting a, a sidewalk right in the middle of it. And it's not like you could, I guess you could have, but we, none of us thought it was a good idea to. Cut it off here and try to extend it through and then add it again. So we, a- as you know, it's very, very steep.
Yeah.
We ended up, um, was taking out almost the entire north bay anyway. So we were gonna remove and replace it. Now we're just, heated concrete's an interesting thing. It's not really, the pieces aren't expensive. It's tubing basically. They put this glissol through this tubing. But it's not done a ton. It was not a ton with that. We just, it's kind of funny. I just got done doing one down in Burlington, so very familiar. So that'll probably be in front of you next county. That's, that's all I have anyway.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any further questions for the city engineer from Kansas and Council? Okay, we'll move to item number six, which is public comments and or correspondence. And this is the time that's set aside. Uh, for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. Uh, no action will be taken, um. And, uh, if you want to make a public comment, please state your name and address for the record. And keep your comments to no more than two minutes. So are there any public comments?
All right, I'm, uh, Phil Lees and, uh, Muscatine address. So I'm, I'm here tonight to introduce myself. I'm running for, uh. State representative for the eighty-second district of which West Liberty is a part of. Um, I've been going around the district for the last, uh, four and a half months, trying to hit every, uh. Um, city council, the district, school boards, just to introduce myself. Um, you know, if I win in November, it's, it's gonna be my privilege to work with you, to listen to you, um. And to do everything I can as a state representative to assist West Liberty. Uh, I can tell you, West Liberty, uh. One of the highlights of my campaign was, uh, the Latino festival, um, that we participated in, uh, last month. Um, it was just, what an awesome, awesome experience seeing everybody in West Liberty show up and come together for that. Um, you know, I have an opponent that doesn't speak very highly about West Liberty and a lot of the new American immigrants that live here and. Um, to be able to see the community to show up, um, I can't wait to represent you as your state rep. And to just support everybody in your community, whether they are gone here or made West Liberty their home. So, um, one thing I'm committed to, like I said, is just listening, but as I've gone around the district. Um, one important issue facing cities is local fire departments. Uh, the chief in West Branch was telling me that. They're on their third insurance company in, uh, two years. If they lose the insurance company they have, there's not another option. Um, I wasn't aware that Iowa do not back up volunteer fire departments with insurance, uh, but. I'm gonna put a, I'm not gonna play partisan politics and bicker. You know, we're gonna make sure that our, uh. Volunteer fire departments are insured, um, and backed up so that they can do their job. Um, and, you know, I tell everybody, I don't care what, what party you're part of, you know, I. Gonna work with everybody regardless of political affiliation and treat everybody with respect and dignity and. Even if we disagree on something, we're still gonna be respectful, but it will be a. Privilege and honor to be your state representative and look forward to working with everybody here. So, thanks, thanks.
Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments? Hearing that, uh, we'll move on to city council with, uh, public comments and or correspondence. Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Schultz.
A couple of things. I did have someone reach out to me concerning a utility bill. Um, I did work with the staff there in City Hall and it was like they were handling it pretty well and. It got resolved and it's all good. Um, I've had twenty years. No comments on the missing stop sign downtown. Because people continue to run it and then I feel bad and I just say to just people there and. We're aware. They definitely reached out to me concerning the annexation at the end of Eighth Street. Um, they wanted to make sure that it was on our minds that the traffic on the street is already pretty. Hefted when it comes to the school start times. Uh, I think it would be good to keep on our minds, future. Future passes to make an entrance exit kind of further down to that and kind of. The sidewalk going in there on a car wash and J V's, I'm excited about that. See that start connecting. And I didn't catch up with the event and.
Okay. Um, council member Frazek?
I have no.
Okay, council member Dominguez.
Um, I just, I was, I missed the last meeting, so I didn't get to talk about the Leo and the Policy Institute, which was amazing. Um, I learned so much about. Things that I thought I'd never learn about. I learned about just how important. Building ordinances can be to communities and how it can affect. Not only protecting new homes that are built. Um, but also, uh, lowering our insurance, you know, rates because our community would be more protected. If there was a tornado or high winds, if we put in building ordinances that make sure that it's a specific quality of product. Which I think is important to make quality homes. Um, I talked to Ken a little bit about talking, um, more into what we can do for maybe subsidized. Homes, more low-income homes. I noticed that the homes. That are supposed to be affordable housing in the new development are like four hundred plus thousand dollars. Um, so to me, that's not very affordable, but you know, as I understand it, that. That, that qualifies, I don't know. Um, and then, oh, and then at the Naleo, uh, Policy Institute, I also. Met with two other council members, one from the east coast, one from the west coast, that were both really interested to speak with upwards. So I connected Jessa and. And Kat from upwards to those, um, council members. And so hopefully we'll keep the. Childcare, uh, program spreading throughout the, the country. The only thing I received was, uh, somebody had reached out about, they had heard a report about. Cities receiving grants for water or water testing. I wasn't familiar with that, so, um. I just thought I would share that. I think my main case is they're talking about the. The lead pipe remediation, um. And I, and I know that the federal government was looking at helping or assisting, but is. Do they already have that in place? The, the financial like support or not yet?
If, this is why it's so critical that people go online and fill out the, uh, survey.
Survey.
Uh, and I think, will the results of that make a difference on what is available to us as a community in the future? I've seen some nods of heads of people that know about that. Anything further to add? Either the city engineer from Brittany on?
I know, um, just meetings that I've sat in on, um, the. There's different sections of the timeline, uh, so this first section is really the, the scouting project, seeing what height. Materials communities have, seeing what needs to be switched out. And then further along, there's gonna be the section where they go and really say, hey, this is what you need to fix. And then that's when your complaints and stuff like that are gonna come in. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, uh, with the.
Sorry, one more thing.
Sure.
Here, I'm sorry.
No, that's our thing.
Um, there'll be e- early meeting at the library. I almost forgot to say that.
Twenty-seven from.
From eleven.
Eleven eight, yeah.
Eleven five and we will, the library is for the childcare with several four-hour volunteers from the school, so.
That's awesome.
They're gonna try to have some people there to watch people's kids while they wait.
I did have someone there shout asking if it is wheelchair accessible and the elevator is running.
Yeah.
It's not the best elevator.
The fire department will be on standby.
Honestly, it takes ten less than five minutes.
But it is, it's available. It, as I understand it, anyone in Muscatine County can participate.
It's essentially you're voting by absentee.
Um, right.
Person. So there's no voting machine is gonna be present or anything like that. It's, it's a.
Okay, it, it will be like regular election day, fewer hours that day, but everything that's available to a citizen. Um, on election day will be available that day. All right, um, then moving on, um. City manager, uh, Gurus, do you have anything as far as, um, comments or correspondence?
Uh, just that I had a contact from a, a Maria Jimenez. A community member, um, had caught information on, on the application for trees and question. She has a very mature walnut tree and, um. Wanted to inquire about it being removed due to the safety of the walnuts falling on the sidewalk in the ground and. Um, I referred, um, Public Works Director Adam Reinhardt to go speak with her. And, uh, and to follow up with her and I will need to see where, see where we're at. But to my understanding, it's a very mature tree. And it's healthy, so, you know, it's not likely that we'll be taking it down.
All right, then, um, all right, city, our city clerk then, uh, in correspondence of.
I do not have anything at this time.
Okay, thanks. Item number seven, A, the, uh, discussion and appropriate. Action by the city council of West Liberty, Iowa on a new screen for the wastewater treatment plant and, um. The process will be discussion, then motion, and then consent vote. Um, so that information about that is in, uh, Craig's report too. So, uh, first, I'll open it up for any discussion. All right, hearing no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion. To.
Approve the new.
Approve the new speaker.
Okay, okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there, oh, we've done discussion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, uh, and the screen is approved. Next up is, uh, item B. Uh, or seven B, uh, resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, ten fifteen hyphen one eight three. A resolution for lost projects transferred to that trail to the V. By C, um, subdivision, Pickleball resurfacing and Lopsy Park Trail. Uh, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to through the resolution to transfer fund?
Is there a, uh, second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote. The deputy clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim, Chairman Karen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dana Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim Frazek?
Yes.
Yes.
So the ayes have it, uh, and the resolution is approved. Next is item seven C, resolution twenty twenty-four, ten fifteen. Hyphen one eight four, resolution approving the addition of a seventh full-time officer for the West Liberty Police Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Then moved in second and is there discussion?
I just wanted to say really quickly the. Cause I missed the, I missed Chief's, um, presentation, uh, so it might be a little redundant, but. There, I know that, you know, I can see the headlines now. You know, getting a seventh officer, there's gonna be some, some people who see that in the paper and don't. Quite take a minute to really understand what that means. And, you know, for a couple of years, I sat on the Reimagining Campus Safety Action Committee for the University of Iowa and we learned. So much statistically about how. The o- officers who make the, maybe a misjudgment. Or something out in the field which causes all these riots and, and, and everything else. Um, but there's been studies that show that officers are completely drained and tired and they make more mistakes, more mistakes when they are tired. And our police officers have been tired for a long time. And Josh knows that because he was here before as well. And I just, so I just wanted to make a statement because if it hits the paper, I wanted to make sure to say that. Uh, we have a chief that is very invested in community policing, which is what is needed. Uh, in our community. And so I think it's very important that we pass this to give our officers some relief and so they can really focus on. Making those connections in the community and seeing that, you know, dream come to fruition. That's all I gotta say, as corny as it sounds.
My concerns were funding this position, but I think we've got that all worked out to. Have most important issues.
The funding part will come. My understanding is we've got to do a budget for, um, and re- amend that and so. We'd have to look at the, uh, when they're coming up. And it's a further discussion.
The, uh, presentation that he had last week was very helpful and understanding, but I think we are in a much healthier place. Than when, uh, he was probably on the force before he became chief. So he's done a great job of getting everybody on board and, uh. This will do a lot to alleviate, uh, maybe some stress and stuff and be able to keep some police officers longer term. So that's the win-win.
Right. Further, thank you, Ron, for the comments, sending for the comments. Uh, the deputy clerk will call roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Next up is, uh, item, uh, seven D, resolution twenty twenty-four, ten fifteen hyphen one eight five. A resolution for disposal of city par- property stored in the police garage at West Liberty, uh, Iowa. And, uh, so first is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Now it's open for discussion.
Um, where are the items going?
That was my question.
Yeah, uh, that's what I'm working, uh, trying to figure out because I don't want the mayor's product to this kind of thing. The app project was essentially just to kickstart it because they actually bikeless heroes and stuff that. Can currently use because you, uh, it probably used to have some, uh. Bike, uh, certified officers, but we currently not. So we have some police bikes that are back and not going on this, maybe they are marked and stuff. But they got marked and then this is like program, uh, some of the other items are just a little, um, swap car item. There's. Cameras and, and the reporters, just out of the stuff that is. These passive drivers take the space.
Yeah, I, I was gonna mention the, um, Iowa City has the bike library as well and they take. Bikes in any condition or you can bring your bike there and they will show you how to repair it. So, but, but that's a good resource too, for if somebody was interested in starting something like. Like that here, that's an idea, but, um, I thought it was a really neat opportunity to be able to.
Yeah, some of the bikes are bringing with the two, the two bike lights that are bringing that. Not sure where they came from, they're sitting there and just not being used and that.
Yeah, they take those, all that, all those parts and stuff.
And at home, it, it looked like that they haven't even been taken out. It just, it just look, that's just not being used in our media, just like the fighter to get home. Yeah, yeah, um, that was. Concern I had is a number of things that look like they haven't been taken out of the package yet, you know, and I hate to see. That spare money, uh, but those two bicycles look like they are good ones and. I see kids running around town here with kind of dilapidated yet. If we can figure out some way, um. To use them either through the collective or personally, I like the idea of them going to, uh, someone in town and. Even if we could figure that out.
I just tried to figure out a way to see if they have a garage given.
Sure, yeah. It'd be far better if they're used than, uh, continuing. All right, is there further discussion?
I was just, my thoughts exactly. The bike didn't look in that bad of shape, so if they can be used. You guys know out there community too that maybe somebody ran into or something that might need one or something, but if they're open for it.
Well, at the, at the food bank, I know they used to bring clothes there for people who didn't, who. Maybe wanted to sort through them. If they wanted them, they could, they could have them. I don't know if that's a possibility, Dr. Zapp, but they. Wanted, uh, if you, if you park the bikes right outside the door or something, I don't know.
They're gonna, they're gonna go. And these are trucks, or at least one. And these are trucks, or at least one is a truck and those are.
Yeah, that one's fairly expensive, I, I got a code from when they originally purchased it, it was a five hundred dollar bike.
You should put a magnet on it, the first issue of those were out of brass and it won't stick, they're valuable.
How do you know that?
I have five very necessary bicycle. You're out of border. All right, the deputy clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
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 I think before I get the total here, I guess, uh, the agenda. Um, we are now up to, um, item seventeen, a resolution twenty twenty four, ten fifteen. Hyphen one eight six, a resolution accepting public property from the city of, uh, the East School District to the West Liberty. Fire Association, House at the West Liberty Fire and EMS Department Building, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there discussion?
I am curious with seeing these items such as the school lockers, the. Sink units, refrigerator, I just wanna make sure this didn't stir up anything. From our asbestos situation with this building, I wanna be curious that that has been looked at beforehand. During or now, kind of how this all. I'm nervous about that because I believe these items are sitting now currently already at the firing department.
Right, yeah. Well, yes, um, this, this has been a bit difficult for me to track this down, but apparently. This was done between, uh, the school administration and, uh, the association. Where we come into play with this is that it's our, it's the fire department's building that they, uh, got to move to. Now regarding the, uh, building that we will be acquiring or are acquiring, um. We'll have to look at all of those issues with that, um, I think is, is the best answer I can give you regarding this. The items that were taken, unless the city manager has a different view or someone else has a different view. I don't believe that they were items that, um. Would contain asbestos, it might be the, um, removal, what, what that's. Opened up with the removal and we'll have to sort that out, so. Leave, uh, city manager anymore on that or anyone else on that issue.
Yeah, we will have to, we'll review where the lockers were located since they were apart. Attached to the original portion of the building and I spoke to our building inspector to, um. Get some recommendations of someone who can go in and test the, um, the concrete. Just to make sure that there was nothing in the concrete that would have had asbestos, but that will have to be done. Um, when we take ownership of the building, um, I. I haven't spoke to the, I did briefly speak with the fire department, but, um. I, I don't have any information as to, um, what was on the lockers when they moved them. And that's all I have to add.
Other questions or comments that folks have? Hearing none, uh, the deputy clerk will call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh, next up is item, uh, seven F, Resolution twenty twenty four, ten fifteen hyphen one eight seven. A resolution for disposal of city, uh, property stored at the West, uh, Liberty Fire Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve resolution for disposal, let's see.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? This is in the report of what they, uh, have, uh. Uh, with remodeling and, uh, what they have that they need to dispose of.
I have, I have a question later and I, and maybe it was talked about last meeting because I missed that, but. Was like, was the city aware that the fire department was going to do some remodeling and. All of that or they just do it? Because it's like they already did it and so we're just giving it our blessing.
I became aware of this, so.
Sounds like that probably needs to be a discussion too, that because like it was done or. They did submit a building, um, permit for a portion of it. And so the building inspector was aware of one of the portions that were occurring. So we do have that on file and then city manager works worked with Brian to get the other items needed for it.
Right, is there further discussion? Hearing none, the deputy clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Next up is item, uh, seven G, Resolution twenty twenty four, ten fifteen hyphen one eight eight. A resolution naming depositories, uh, is there a motion, um, to approve? I'm satisfied, or you're here and then the second here?
Sure, second.
Uh, is there discussion?
I just wanna know that last year you would have seen the community state bank ones on there, those are no longer banks. So now it's just down to the three.
All right, oh, sorry, um. So no further discussion, um, the deputy clerk will call the roll.
Yes, Martinez.
Yes.
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 Item seven H, uh, set the, uh, city council workstations for the second. Meeting of the month, each month effective January first of twenty twenty five. And that's an information.
It, does there need to be any action on this?
No, no action is needed, it's notification and consent.
I'm not opposed.
Mister Mayor, I just wanted to add that, um, I just thought for my scheduling purpose, um, if we. Set the meetings to occur at the second meeting of every month, it. Hopefully that would, um, allow council to be best prepared for their schedules. Um, there will be times though with budget coming up that we may have additional, uh, work sessions, but, um. But again, to actively just schedule them at the second meeting, um, that way you know for scheduling purposes with your, with your businesses and your. Uh, jobs.
All right, council member Martinez, you were making a comment that answered the questions, okay, all right, uh. Then, uh, the next item is item, uh, seven I. Setting the date for the annual trick or treat in the city of West Liberty for October thirty first, um. And, uh, two thousand twenty four and, uh, trick or treat. Trail from five to six P M and the town trick or treating from six P M to seven thirty P M. Uh, it doesn't look like that, do we have to take an action on this city?
Just to consent.
Okay.
To say that we are going to do it, and I spoke with Nick Heath and he said that. Five to six for the trail is typical and then six to seven thirty tends to be plenty of time. He said that he does know that there are times when people will go till eight, but he said it's not beneficial to stop that at seven thirty.
I think for this year's seven thirty is a little bit stretching the time.
And that's definitely something that we can take a look at, um, he did say that he wouldn't go past that eight o'clock mark, um, but. Six to seven thirty typically works, but as council member Martinez said, with the growth, you might need to take over that next year.
Okay, item, uh, seven J, uh, set the, uh, date for the budget amendment number one. On November fifth, uh, two thousand twenty four, consent item, uh, so. Think now or forever hold your peace. November fifth, oh, election day. From five to seven, or five to eleven. Get it out here sooner or later.
Will be at the library, our meeting, our meeting will be at the library on the, there's a, we will be back here on the nineteenth. Um, there were only two days that we were unable to be here and the fifth is one of them.
Coming back from Europe yesterday, this is now two o'clock, two thirty in the morning. Used to here, uh, item seven pay, the last item before adjournment, uh, set the date, uh, for the twenty. Eighty slash twenty annexation public hearing for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty four at seven thirty. P M, so, uh, again, it's information that folks are, uh, have concerns. Uh, let us know that. Okay, item number eight, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.